We will call to order Town of Prescott Valley Regular Council Meeting, April 11th, 2019. I would like, welcome Pastor Mike to come on down for our invocation. Welcome, sir.
I'm Pastor Michael Cannon from Mount Zion Tabernacle Church. I'm very honored. Father God, we seek you very humbly because we need you. But Father God, we stand before you very boldly because we believe you. Father, we believed you when you said that you would give wisdom to whoever so would ask, liberally and freely. So we ask for wisdom right now in this very hour. Father, we believed you when you said that you would never leave us and never forsake us. So Father, we ask that your Spirit would permeate this place in this very hour. Father, we believed you when you said that we should pray for our government officials. So we pray right now for these leaders of Prescott Valley. I pray, God, that you would give them eyes that they could see. Lord, I pray that you give them ears that they could hear, right now, Lord. Lord, I pray in Jesus' precious name that you would give them clarity of thought. Lord, I pray that you would give them a heart of compassion. Lord, we pray that Prescott Valley would be prosperous and in health even as their soul prospers. And so, God, we simply ask that your will be done. And we pray this in Jesus' precious name. And everybody said, "Amen." Bless you.
Sir, thank you. Would you like to lead us into the pledge? Go ahead, start us off.
I pledge thee to the flag of the United States of America. It stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Kalguda.
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
And Councilmember Packard.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna start off with Proclamations. The first one will be Tai Chi and Kyong. Clerk, go ahead.
Tai Chi and Kyong Day, April 27th, 2019. Whereas World Tai Chi and Kyong Day is celebrated in 80 nations annually, and whereas Tai Chi and Kyong are ancient Chinese arts that provide health benefits to people of all ages, including stress reduction, improved focus, coordination, flexibility, and balance, and brings people together in harmony with the environment. Whereas World Tai Chi and Kyong Day is always celebrated around the world on the last Saturday of April each year, and now therefore I, Kal Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2019, as Tai Chi and Kyong Day in Prescott Valley, and encourage our citizens to help create a wave of healing energy by joining in this worldwide event.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you guys like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor and councilpersons. So, we would like to invite the public to this free event. It's held every year. This is the 20th year. It's beneficial, health benefits, especially for us seniors. And there'll be audience participation, Native American flute, Tai Chi, Qigong, martial art application, and we welcome all. It's gonna be at Bradshaw Mountain Middle School, April 27th, 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
Is it true that it even helps with balance issues?
Yes.
Next up will be a proclamation for Arbor Day.
National Arbor Day, April 26th, 2019. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Kal Palguda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the Town of Prescott Valley, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Someone will say a few words, eh?
We can both do it.
There you go.
I'm Ron Brickman. This is Lane Follman. We're members of the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you for the proclamation. We want to invite everybody to Sunflower Park on April 26th between 10:00 and 12:00 to celebrate Arbor Day. There'll be some tree plantings. We hope to have 150 kids. They always help. There are gonna be some probably food there, some dogs and things, so come out and join us, and we'll hope for some good weather.
I think he meant hot dogs.
We don't know that, but there will be dogs.
There will be dogs, yes. Yeah, so we're glad to pick up this proclamation as always. The greenery of the town is very important to us. Tree City USA is something we really go into, and you will see the flag flying once we are commissioned again. So, thank you for the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Our final proclamation will be Fair Housing Month. So, the representative for that, is there one here?
Fair Housing Month, April 2019. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas, excuse me, the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Months in the United States, therefore I, Mayor Kal Palguda of the Town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Fair Housing Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and do hereby urge all residents of this community to comply with and show their support for the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Acts.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Wanted to thank you for the proclamation and point out that this community for the last 15 years has administered a rather robust housing rehab program which enables some affordable housing in the community where we don't necessarily have affordable housing for people who need it. So, we appreciate the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Start down on the end. Councilwoman Schumacher, anything?
I don't have anything at this time.
Anything?
No, I'm fine here.
It's deferred over to you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Tuesday night, I attended a school board meeting. At that meeting, as I'm the liaison from the council to the school board, there was an audited general report on all schools as to how they're doing, and the report was regarding funding per pupil in each district. And we are in the 5%, which means 95% of all schools in Arizona are funded more than we are. And there are a variety of different reasons based on the area and whether they're able to do overrides and bonds and other things. As you recall, at the last election, we had a $15 million bond that failed by less than 300 votes, and that money would've paid for a lot of what was needed, specifically school safety, school buses, additional technology, and other improvements to buildings and facilities. Also on Tuesday in the morning, I attended a Arizona Town Hall at Embry-Riddle on Criminal Justice. That was the last one for this year. Our Deputy Chief, James Edelstein, was also there. This has been going on since last September. They had their main annual meeting in November. And there are a lot of good things that have come out of it, and it's being presented to the legislature. So, the three big issues were, that we know of, were reentry and recidivism, trying to break the cycle and try to divert them from jail prior to going in. You know, that was important. And then, I forget what the third one was, but anyway, that's all in a report. If you really want to look at it, you go to AZ Town Hall and azdownhall.org, and you could, you could print it all out or download it and read it there. Let's see. I was also asked to make an announcement about Bradshaw Mountain High School is in the second year of having a JROTC program, Junior ROTC. It's a great program. It builds confidence and leadership in each of these students. They do not necessarily have to go on to a military career, but it teaches, it gives them the skills to really advance in their future. So, if you know anybody that's thinking about sending their child to a charter school or private school because of certain programs similar to this, I just want to let you know that it's available in the Humboldt Unified School District at Bradshaw Mountain High Then another public service announcement. The Prescott Valley Police Foundation is having their golf tournament the last Sunday, last Saturday, I believe, in April. So, we're looking for golfers. It's, it hasn't been as, not many golfers have signed up yet, so we're really looking to improve that. It's a fundraiser, and the monies go to help our police department. It's that simple. There's also a ball drop being taking place that day. If we sell all the balls there, somebody could win a whole lot of money. And it's just, it's a long day, but it's a fun day. And it's taking place at the Stone Ridge Golf Course. That information is available on the Prescott Valley Police Foundation website and Facebook page. And, one more, okay, the Prescott, yeah, I got two more things, I'm sorry. I've had a busy week. Prescott Center for the Arts is asking for people that have used graduation robes, they need it for an upcoming play. So if you have a graduation robe that you're willing to donate, Prescott Center for the Arts is needing it. And the last item is Memorial Day weekend. We're gonna have the Arizona Prescott Valley Grand Prix here. It's minibikes, quads, motorcycles. They're gonna be right outside the event center, and I will be the emcee for the weekend along with my friend Mark Wright. And we're looking for sponsors for that event. So, if you have any, you know, if you have any questions about that, please contact me, and thank you for your time.
No extravaganza?
Yeah, extravaganza.
No, I was looking at gold. Don't forget, this Saturday, we have extravaganza right outside here. 9:00 a.m., I believe it starts, and we'll be rotating throughout the day on the stage with different concerts, I believe it's gonna be, from the local schools. So if you haven't been there, even if you don't have any kids, it is truly amazing, especially when they give the green light for all the children to run out into the grass to gather some eggs. It is a, it's pretty awesome. I'll have, my twins will be there, so that's usually a challenge, and we'll see how that actually goes, but it's a good time, so just go on out there and at least support the groups that'll be putting on a performance. So, props to our Parks and Rec back there. So, thank you, sir. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to Consent Agenda. Councilman Packard, I'm sorry, did you have anything?
All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Item number A, approving the March 7th and March 21st, 2019 work-study minutes and March 28th, 2019 council minutes and executive session minutes. Item B, approving the February 25th committee and executive session minutes and March 13th, 2019 board and commission selection committee minutes. Item C, approving the purchase of Vercata security cameras in the amount of $56,218.46 from the Information Technology Capital Line item. Item D, approving the amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement for Dava and Associates in amount of $26,600 for the Florentine Road stormwater improvement, CIP number 446. Item E, accounts payable. Item F, approving the purchase of an interactive digital information kiosk.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as a whole.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Clerk, will you please call the vote?
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. For Item 8, I'm gonna defer over to Vice Mayor Nye.
Well, I've asked Councilman Anderson to handle this one, but this was one impressive lady.
Okay.
Come on down, Lori.
One position on the Parks and Recreation Commission became open when Danny Avalos resigned effective January 15th, 2019. Mr. Avalos was first appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission on June 12th, 2012, to fill an existing term with renewal date of June 30th, 2013. He was reappointed to two more consecutive terms, with the last term having renewal date of June 30th, 2019. The vacancy was advertised, and three applications were received. Vice Mayor Nye, and myself and Marty Grossman conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Lori Hunt to fill the vacancy made by Danny Avalos' departure, with the term renewal date of June 30th, 2019. And just a little bit of editorial here, I've worked with Ms. Hunt on a couple of things in the town since she came to town, and I've never seen anybody get so active so quickly. And it's a pleasure to have you finally being appointed, we hope, to the commission. And I want to thank you for your perseverance here.
Would you like to share your thoughts about why you were interested in this commission, Lori?
Sure. As you may have seen, I'm a retired public official for about 30 years, and retired city manager and community development director. And we've been here about a year. My husband works at Liberty Traditional Schools, so he's real active with the children. And I'm also on the Humboldt Education Foundation Board, which is very rewarding with Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Grossman. And I just want to get involved, kind of to give back. I love Prescott Valley, and I'm just really excited. I'm super excited to be working with the commission. I've gone to three of their meetings now, and with Brian. And this is a great time to be on that commission, as they're getting ready to do the master plans, so I'm really excited. Thank you so much.
Would you tell us a little bit, because of the last statement I made, about your planning experience and knowledge?
Sure. So, my degree's in Urban Regional Planning Studies, and I began as a planner and then managed the Riverside County National Date Festival for three years, which is the county fair in Riverside County near, in Indio, California. And I did a lot of community development, and then became the Assistant City Manager and City Manager of Murrieta, California, and then the City Manager of Canyon Lake. And then I was the Community Development Director in Sacramento County over building, planning, engineering, code enforcement, and economic development. And then the last two years I spent at Laguna Woods Village managing the Russ Cartezzi Leisure World project there as the Assistant General Manager. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Some of us here on the dais just attended the ribbon cutting for the new playground equipment over at Mountain Valley Park. And all we gotta say is, all of the laughter and the squeals and the joy over there, it was, it was so wonderful, and I know that probably motivates you as well.
Right. As Brian showed me the picture, I said, "Where'd you get all those kids from?" Because it wasn't hard, so. Anyway, thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'd like to make a motion. Okay. Motion to appoint Lori Hunt to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term with renewal date of June 30th, 2019 by electronic vote.
I'll second that. Ma'am, please call the vote.
Thank you. That passes unanimously now, Mayor.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Nye, will you be taking the second one?
I will take the second one. One position for the Municipal Property Corporation Board became open when Don Packard resigned, so that he could join us, effective January 10th, 2019, after being elected to Town Council. Mr. Packard was first appointed to the Municipal Property Corporation Board on October 27th, 2011, to fill an existing term, and reappointed to two more consecutive terms with the last term with a renewal date of November 18th, 2020. The vacancy was advertised, and one application was received. Myself and councilmembers Rick Anderson, Marty Grossman, conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Garth Jones to fill the vacancy made by Don Packard's departure with a term renewal date of November 18th, 2020. The vacancy was advertised, and one application was received. Myself and councilmembers Rick Anderson, Marty Grossman, conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Garth Jones to fill the vacancy made by Don Packard's departure with a term renewal date of November 18th, 2020.
Mr. Jones, come on.
Come on up.
I better have said, be sure you get close to the mic.
Yeah, stay close to the mic, so the folks at home that are watching us can hear.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
So, tell us a little bit about why you applied.
Well, I've had a long and happy life, and I've had a tremendous amount of experience in business and industry. I was a consultant for an international management consulting firm whose clients were people like IBM, the State of Hawaii, NASA, and Goddard Space Flight Center. And we assisted these corporations in problem-solving and decision-making techniques. I traveled extensively around the world doing this, and I just felt that my background in business, finance, real estate, and that type of thing would be useful to the city of Prescott Valley. I've been here now, lived here. I've been here now, lived here for about seven years. We lived in Sun City Grand before we moved up here. Just kinda liked the environment and the atmosphere and so forth, so here I am. I've been instructed to get out of the house, so I felt that this was a good opportunity to use some of my skills and background in contributing something to the community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. As you can see, we had quite an enjoyable time with both of these candidates and we particularly enjoyed your knowledge, put together with a sense of humor. We thought that was fabulous.
Thank you.
All right. You wanna make a motion, Rick?
I'll make a motion. Okay. Motion to appoint Garth Jones to fill the vacancy made by Don Packard's departure from the Municipal Property Corporation Board with a term renew, or with a renewal date of November 18th, 2020 by electronic vote.
Can I have a second? I'll second that, please. Clerk, will you please call the vote?
That's approved unanimously, Mayor.
You're in.
I'm in, all right.
Nicely done, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have quite a few appointments tonight, as those of you who have an agenda can see. On April 25th, 2019, Ryan Judy's term on the Personnel Board as the exempt employee member will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Ryan Judy was first appointed to a full term on this board on June 21st, 2007 as the exempt employee member, and this reappointment will be his eighth consecutive term. Myself, Council Members Anderson and Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Ryan Judy as exempt board member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2021. And come and show your face. No, you don't wanna do that, all right? Then we'll just, Marty, would you like to make a motion?
Button won't push. Okay, I make a motion to reappoint Ryan Judy to the Personnel Board as the exempt employee member by electronic vote.
Stay right there, Ryan. You're not getting away that easy.
Is that a motion?
And I'll make a second.
Clerk, will you please call the vote?
While we're doing that, why don't you tell them why you're willing to serve on this and stay so long?
I'm sorry, what did you just appoint me to? I'm happy to serve. Luckily Karen Smith, our HR manager or director, actually Assistant Time Manager now, does a fabulous job with this board and it's seldom needed, but when it is, you know, it's important that we look over policies and procedures for the town, so I'm just happy to play a small part in that.
Great job, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. You wanna handle the next one, Rick?
Perfect. Did we get a result of that?
On April 25th, 2019, Darlene Packard's term on the Personnel Board as a citizen member will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Darlene Packard was first appointed to a partial term on the board on October 12th, 2006 as a citizen member, and this reappointment will be her eighth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, myself, and Councilman Marty Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Darlene Packard for a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2021. And Darlene is on her way down.
Right.
After having seen the example set by Ryan Judy.
Yeah, we need a motion and a second?
Yes.
Not yet.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Darlene Packard to the Personnel Board as a citizen member by electronic vote.
And I'd like to make a second?
Clerk, please call the vote.
And while that happens, Darlene, tell us why you're stuck in here for so long in this position.
I, because I love our town. I came here after taking a beat on the Civic Academy and I've been here ever since. So, we live in a great place and I just love giving back to our community. And it's an easy board. We meet once a year.
Very true, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And the significance of that is how well our community is run.
Truly. It truly is.
Yep. Thank you, Darlene. So how did, how did she make out?
That passed unanimously as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
As moving on here, on April 25th, 2017, Lynn Graskas' term on the Personnel Board as a citizen member will come due for renewal. She did submit the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Lynn Graskas was first appointed to the full term on this board on April 27th, 2017 as citizen member, and this reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Myself, Council Members Anderson and Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Ms. Graskas for the term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2021. And I don't see her, so we'll just move on. Wanna make a motion?
Let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lynn Graskas to the Personnel Board as a citizen member.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Nye, do you wish to vote?
Thank you, one through this one. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, that's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Looks like we must have saved the best for last on this one.
We did. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay. All right, and our final reappointment, unless he's pulled his packet. Apparently not.
You do have a choice.
On April 25th, 2019, Richard Parker's term on the Personnel Board as the exempt alternate employee member will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Richard Parker was first appointed to a full term on this board on July 8th, 1999 as the exempt alternate employee member, and his, this reappointment will be his 11th consecutive term. Vice Mayor Nye, myself, and Council Member Marty Grossman are recommending the reappointment of Richard Parker as the exempt alternate employee member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2021.
Appreciate the opportunity to serve and I stand behind Ryan Judy 100%. If at some time he comes, becomes incapacitated, I will step in.
Marty, how about a motion?
Sure. Motion to reappoint Richard Parker to the Personnel Board for the 11th time as the exempt alternate employee member by electronic vote.
And I'll second that.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item G, consideration of approving the professional services agreement with TerraCon Consultants in the amount of $47,950 for the Stone Ridge Water Tank Rockfall Protection, CIP number W425.A as an add-on.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. As you recall, we discussed this last week at the work study. We are recommending a, an agreement, a professional services agreement with TerraCon Consultants for rockfall protection at the Stone Ridge Water Tank Site. That tank will end up being constructed. We're looking at bringing that actual, the actual full construction project back to you for a ward probably in mid-May and then possibly in June, we'll probably see the actual construction of the tank, but this is for rockfall protection for the site. And as I showed you last week, you know, we have some pretty steep slopes on this site and the rock face is fractured and does, rocks do fall from time to time. And so I think that kind of explains it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Council, any other questions?
I'd be glad to make a motion if there's no questions.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Motion to approve professional service agreement with TerraCon Consultants in the amount of $47,950 for the Stone Ridge Water Tank Rockfall Protection, CIP W425, by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, go ahead and call the vote, please.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item H, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2087, approving FDP 19-004, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 207, Apex Building Material Yard. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You're looking at a final development plan. This property was proactively zoned with a PAD overlay in hopes of someday having the area that was designated as a tract for parking prior to the town or the county having the ability to regulate things like parking requirements. However, that hasn't come to fruition. The property owner still has the private property right to develop their property consistent with the C2 zoning. They bring forward an application for this 4,500-square-foot lot to have a building of a little over 1,000 square feet, which would include building material storage, which is permitted behind a screen fence, as well as a business and a residence. A residence can occur in this zoning district on the second floor or the back 50% of a building. The parking has been accommodated on-site as indicated by your site plan and the use meets or exceeds the town standards for the use, therefore staff recommends approval and would respond to any questions you may have.
Sure.
The square footage, the, the, they put on there is actually a little smaller than the, than the building, the buildings, that's actually the footprint of the building. The second floor has an additional 600 square feet, so it's, it'll, it'll end up being a total of about 1,600 square feet at the end of the day, if that makes any difference. I know in the, in the pre-planning meeting, they said I can go smaller, I can't go bigger though, so. So if we could amend that to make it 1,600 square feet, I'd appreciate it, of enclosed building.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from Council? If not?
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign the attached IGA with Yavapai County to improve North County Fair Trail and then transfer it to the town maintenance. Isn't that the right one?
Nope. Yeah, just scratch that last one.
Marty, have you got it?
Yeah, I got it.
All right. Motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 2087, approving FDP 19-004, and to sign any agreement under Prop 207 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote, thank you.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, sir, for clarification. Item I, consideration of approving the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the town's acceptance of, maintenance of the 2,800 feet of North County Fair Trail. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did discuss this item last week at our work study session, but like to give a few highlights just for the public watching tonight. What item we have before you is North County Fair Trail. This roadway has been in place for quite a few years and wanna call Council's attention, in 2007, we had a letter agreement with the county that if they brought it up to town, town standard, then town would accept it for maintenance. So basically what that would mean is there would be three inches of paving and a service course plus granting a right-of-way to the town of Prescott Valley. So I've been in touch, Dan Cherry, the Public Works Director at Yavapai County. We've been working on this particular IGA and things are in place for them to go ahead and move forward this work, but we need to have this intergovernmental agreement in place for maintenance, takeover, and for the county to do the improvements. I do wanna point out to Council, this is no cost to the town at this point, but the agreement's in place that the county will pay for all the improvements for the pavement section and then we'll take it over for maintenance, so no cost to the town at this particular point in time. And at this point, be happy to answer any questions. You can see in the exhibit, some of the county improvements, it's 2,800 feet of roadway. You can see a lot of the county services that are in place out there currently, in addition to, geez, I know that the morgue is out there, the, one of the tracks out there, although I haven't gotten to use it, but it looks exciting, but all kinds of county uses out there, in addition to public uses for the fair, the racetrack and the like. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
What questions, comments?
I don't have a question, but I do see our supervisor, Jack Smith, out there and I just wanna extend a thank you to the fact that if we don't partner in this community, we don't really get anything done. It takes a collaboration of many people. And so I appreciate the county, appreciate what Norm's doing and everything. That's the way this town has come together, that's the way it's going to continue to go. As we work together, it takes more than one. So thank you both again for everything. I know the community will benefit tremendously from this.
Councilman Mayor, if I could, Council, a comment a little further. I know, Dan, we've got several things in the works. In fact, our next item, quite a huge partnership coming up on Sunset Lane. We also have some turn lanes that's in this year's budget. This is just another example of our working relationship. We have a lot of trust between each other. We know what to expect and that working relationship is very, very positive. Do you wanna see these public improvements and go into place and, you know, share our resources, so to speak? So it is a very good partnership. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Norm.
Anything else? Supervisor Smith, thank you again. I reiterate what the Councilwoman said. Not, can we get a motion?
Now, can I make?
I've got some practice reading it.
I'll go ahead and make this motion again. Sorry about that.
Now, this is yours.
Yes, this is the one I wanna read. The motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign the attached IGA with Yavapai County to improve North County Fair Trail and then transfer it to town ownership, or maintenance, sorry.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item J, which has an interesting sequence of numbers.
Yeah.
Consideration of approving the award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Asphalt Paving and Supply Inc. in an amount up to $5,913,313.13. And approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Lion Engineering in the amount of $611,000, $611,000 for construction administration services of the Sunset Lane widening project. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Sunset Lane improvements, the item we have before you, this is partnership number two of three tonight with, this is, I guess, a mega-huge partnership with Yavapai County, if we can call it that, because this is, as you can see, a $6 million construction award. If you recall, last week at work study, we talked quite extensively all the partnerships we had here, not only the partnership with Yavapai County, did point out that they were actually, up to this point, you know, half of the work with getting the right-of-way and with working with all the residents, so they've been a very good partner. Once again, to mention Dan Cherry and his staff at Yavapai County Public Works. So it's been a very successful three-year partnership at this point with scoping, design getting to this point, and actually the exciting part is getting bids in and moving forward with, with construction. So there was a funding IGA put in place for many, for the improvements, and keep in mind, similar to last IGAs, that the funding contribution by the county, we will take over this section of Sunset Lane that's currently in the county under corporate for maintenance when the construction's 100% complete. So we did receive bids on March 25th and Asphalt Paving Supply, a local contracting company, is the low, low bidder. We have a lot of confidence in Asphalt Paving with being a local company, a material supplier too. They've done projects for us in the past, so I know they're excited to get started. In addition to, staff is excited to get in addition to, staff's excited to get started. Also, you have, as part of the award, is construction period services. You see on the exhibit you have, above you is Lyon Engineering, was a design engineer, another local engineering firm, so they've done a great job on design, and we bring them on for construction period services, they do some of the construction monitoring in addition to survey and acceptance of the projects. So we always bring on our engineers for construction period services, and staff will be involved too in the construction. Just your overall exhibit, this original partnership, well, it was an original exhibit that's been in place for many years, but just for the public's benefit, watching just the rehash of what's going on now, utility relocations have gone on for the last nine months, but when we get started with the roadway improvements, basically we get a third lane in the middle, turn lane, curb grader and sidewalk, both sides, underground storm grates, any expenditure there, and new streetlights, and of course Neil Wadsworth and the utility department with upgraded water and sewer lines. So, SuRider Jack Smith, I know is in the audience, and he's been a real champion for this project, and really led the charge to make sure we continue moving forward and get the funding in place. Do want to point out some of the major funding, Yavapai County's basically, you know, $3 million of the funding for the roadway improvements, the town through development impact fees about 2.6 million. Once again, flood control district dollars, I've partnered in the past with Dan on flood control district dollars, the storm water, underground piping is 1.2 million, of course Neil Wadsworth is about half a million dollars for upgrades to water and sewer lines. So with that, like to ask if SuRider Smith would like to make any comments, and then, you know, recommend a ward of the construction, Asphalt Paving Supply and Construction Period Services of Lyon Engineering.
Sir Smith?
And shouldn't Dan share in the pain?
Up here too.
Yeah, come on down.
Well, this is an exciting day, and I can't say that I did it alone, obviously, the council is very instrumental in getting this done, staff has worked tirelessly on this, but also the entire Board of Supervisors, I want to thank them as well, because without their vote of confidence in this project and these many projects, we wouldn't be able to do it either, so I extend my warm thanks to them and you guys, so. Very excited to see this move forward, and it's going to be a great addition to our area over here, so thank you. And we do have Dan Cherry, who's our engineer.
Thank you Supervisor Smith, and thank you to the mayor and council for having me here tonight. This has been a long time in the making, as we all know, and it's really quite the perfect storm of partnering, in my opinion, with the town's funding, the county's regional road program, which is generated by a half cent sales tax that the county collects, and then of course, we have the flood control district dollars involved that are all collected via secondary property tax. It's nice to see this really put to good use here on this project, and I can tell you, got a great price on this project. The top, or the lowest three bids were all extremely close, and we are really happy with the price that came out for this, and so you can feel very comfortable awarding this, and I know the town is going to do a fine job administering this contract as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I just want to go back to the very beginning, when we were proposing this project, we had a lot of community meetings out there, and we went out into the community, now, and Norm got, he had this map that had to be at least 20 feet long, and it detailed every house, every improvement that was going to be done in this project, and they stayed out there as long as necessary to explain it to the citizens that were along Sunset Lane. We were actually out in that community, talking to everybody, and the amount of information that was given at that time just made everybody feel comfortable with going forward with this project, and we've now progressed to this point where we could see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we pray it's not a car coming the other direction, so. It's been, it's been a great partnership, and I'm glad that we could start to see a lot more work, and we're getting closer to the end, so thank you Norm, thank you Don, thank you Jack for your input and your, how vocal you are and how forward thinking you are for our community and the county, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, if not, can we get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion if you trust me.
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated, for the Sunset Improvements Project, CIP number S387, in the amount of $5,913,313.13, and to approve the amendment to the professional services agreement with Lyon Engineering in an amount up to $611,000.
I'll second that, and all of those threes are going to be lucky.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously mayor.
Thank you ma'am. Item K, consideration of approving a contract with a low bidder, Waste Management of Arizona, Inc., for disposal services for Cleanup Day, Spring 2019, in an amount of $41,611.75. Mr. Davis?
Mayor and council, this is another great partnership, our annual Cleanup Day event happens the first Saturday in May every year, a very popular community event. Likewise, we talked at our work study last week, brought the Chamber of Commerce, Marnie, with the Chamber of Commerce, talked about their team up to clean up effort, big day on this same Saturday, talked about, I guess, townwide, we have our adopt a street people go out and clean up, so just about everybody gets involved on this particular day, so that's Spring House Cleaning and Cleanup Day. What you do have before you is our hauling contract, we do send this out for bid, keep in mind, town staff direct some of the traffic and the management of the particular Cleanup Day, but when everything is dumped and we close the gate and the day is done, then we have a waste hauler haul all the waste off and dispose it in a particular landfill. So that's what this item is for you, is for award of the hauling service to Waste Management of Arizona, where the low bidder to provide hauling services by the ton for Cleanup Day.
Thank you sir. Any questions, comments? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll motion to approve a contract with the low bidder, Waste Management of Arizona, Inc., for disposal services for Cleanup Day, Spring 2019, in an amount of $41,611.75, by electronic vote.
I'd like to make a second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously mayor.
Thank you ma'am, thank you Mr. Davis. Moving on, item nine, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter, or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. With that being said? Sir, come on up. Thank you sir.
How are you?
Mike Pruitt?
Thank you.
My name's Mr. Pruitt, I was here last week, spoke about code enforcement. Mr. Fernando and a few others are doing a great job, unfortunately, they're way overwhelmed. I had the opportunity to have Mr. Fernando, the supervisor for code enforcement, come out graciously, meet with me. He walked two blocks that I generally walk for my evening exercise. Within those two blocks, he found over 30 code violations. Now that's either somebody's not doing their job, or they're so overwhelmed, they can't do their job. I handed out a simple letter that I printed off the town's code enforcement thing, simple rules as far as maintaining your backyard, so I don't have to look at junk, smell junk, whatever, for my property, I can enjoy my resident without being burdened by my neighbors. And unfortunately, in the town of Prescott Valley, a lot of people say, well, I've been here 30 years, or I was here when it was jackass flats, I don't need to change. Well, times are changing. And to keep the community up, and I mentioned I live in one of the older neighborhoods on the backside of Prescott Valley, and fortunately, I own my home, and Prescott Valley's going to be my home until I go, and I'm going to try to do everything I can to keep the neighborhood improving. I don't want to just let it be standard quo, I'm trying to get it back into shape to where it belongs. And any advice, any suggestions anybody can make as far as what else I can do besides dealing with Mr. Fernando, like I said, I know he's overwhelmed with work, and he was gracious enough to come out and spend the time with me, because I am a thorn, and I'm going to be a thorn until I have to, until I quit having to see everybody's blith on the way in and out of my house. I'm not even talking about the rest of my neighborhood, I'm just talking the block, the two blocks that I go for my evening exercise walk. So I don't even know what else is out there in the rest of the neighborhood, but just the stuff I see, I'm trying to take pride in the neighborhood and bring it up to the rest of the neighborhood, I mean, we're building beautiful starter homes, $200,000 plus, but let's not forget about the sections that's got the older manufactured homes or town homes in them, and stuff that really need the concentration, because a lot of the new areas are HOAs, and they kind of police themselves. It's the older areas in the town, and that really needs some extra attention put forth to make sure they don't slide any farther down and to hopefully bring those levels of living up some. And you can kind, I gave you the form, it's just a basic guideline of what's, you know, kind of what's expected out of a community and out of good neighbors, and it's all about being a responsible homeowner.
Excellent, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Just keep doing what you're doing, and our emails are on the website, feel free to email us as a council as a whole, and stay in contact with Fernando.
I, I, I do. I, I, I always apologize, but I always shake his hand at the end and
Sure.
Say I know you're doing the best you can, but
Absolutely.
He definitely needs help, and I don't know what can be done to get him more help, but
Excellent.
I know there's only two code enforcement agents in the Prescott Valley area, there's Mr. Smith, which you guys celebrated his five years of anniversary. Five years of service, and I've dealt with him for probably four of those last five years
Sure.
Trying to resolve situations in the neighborhood. The other code enforcement agent, I don't have quite as good a
All right.
... with, but Fernando and I, we get along just great, and you know, he knows if I come to a town meeting, or if I show up at the town hall, I usually have a list and complaints, and they're legitimate complaints, like I said, he walked through and he caught stuff that I hadn't even caught, because
Yes.
He knows better than I do, but I'm just looking at outside storage issues and stuff like that, where people just, nobody wants to throw away anything, it seems like.
I understand sir, thank you, thank you for your time tonight. Is there someone else I would like to speak? Moving on to item 10, and you need a motion to adjourn, please?
I shall move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously mayor.
Thank you ma'am.